Today, we got some upcoming big decisions for Jack City Council that investors will want to know about. And that's why we got Rory Diamond back in the house to talk about these decisions, how the Jacksonville area is capitalizing on it and give you the inside scoop of some votes that are coming up. We are level Facebook for the Tuesday edition of the Not Your Average Investor Show. I'm your host Pablo Gonzalez. With me as always, the man that we call GC because of his genius concepts, because he knows how to generate cash flows, because he's a great co-host and because his name is Greg Cohen. Say hello Greg.
Everybody, great to be with you.
And back on the show today is a guy that we are pumped to have back. He is, he's got the name of a Heisman Trophy winner. He's got the gift of gab of the most skilled late night talk show hosts. And he's got the political career of future governor of Florida. He's the CEO of Canines for Warriors. He's a city councilman, expert networker, really cool all around hang, who mixes two of all of our favorite things, rescue dogs and veterans. Welcome to the show Rory Diamond.
Thanks for having me Pablo and Greg, you guys are awesome.
Happy to have you back, man. Happy to have you back. You know, the show has changed a lot since our first couple of episodes when we're doing it live. We've got this online format now that's got a couple of nuances. I love to welcome the JWB fam and tell them that this is an interactive show. And we've got a new tradition, which is called the roll call. You ready for that Rory?
Yeah, let's roll.
All right, roll call. John Hannan, good afternoon, every, good afternoon. Carl Thompson, good morning. Who we got? We got Bill Shields, Kate Pass Amigos, Kate Passa Bill Shields. Drew Barnhill is back from Alaska. Welcome back Drew. Jen Filson, the godmother of, the fairy godmother of the JWB Not Travel Investor Show community. Greetings from Monterey, California. We got Dean Curry from Ohio. He's back. We got Lee Bishop, the MVP of the Not Your Investor Show family. Leo from California, good morning all. Who else we got? We got Joyce Cordero is joining us. What's up GC?
Well, yeah, I was seeing a couple of new names here. Maria Dangerfield, I believe is a new name.
I'm getting there. I'm getting, we got Peter James, T. Peter James from Virginia. You guys rock. You rock Peter. Thanks for being here with us. We got Marilyn Cotterman from Home of Sasa, Florida.
Home of the Manatees.
Home of the Manatees. All right. Welcome back Marilyn. We got Chris Consaga from Hudson Valley, New York. Good day to you, Chris. Who else we got? I'm just scrolling through. We got Ken Moline, star of the show. Welcome Ken. Maria Dangerfield, a new name. Hello Maria. Welcome to the community. GC beat me to it, but you know what? You're twice as welcome so far. Hope that you make this a routine in your life. We love having you here. Greg Stone, howdy from New Jersey. What else we got? Man, this is a, we, we got Carlos Andres Lopez Cal from Peru in the house. Welcome back Carlos. That's a returning new guest that we got. We got Leslie from Denver who's coming back as well. And we got in the chat, our community managers. You all have met Gina, who we also called G-Star. Today, we also got Joanna who's shouting her, who is going to be part of our community. Would love to figure out a nickname for Joanna. Make sure you welcome her. We got Raj Bantu in the house. Hello Raj, welcome back to you. And that's what we got so far. As we like to say, if you want to learn about owning rental properties in your portfolio, you've come to the right place. If you want to know about best in-class property management for rental property investors, you've come to the right place. And if you just want an edge on the Jacksonville real estate market, because you're a real estate professional and you want some extra opportunities, you've come to the right place. The next place to go after this is chatwithjwb.com. We like to say that this is an interactive show. You drive the conversation as much as possible. There's two ways to interact. One is in the chat that you see going bananas already. We've got a lively community that joins us every week. We've got new folks showing up that we want to stick around. So we hope you do. And we, we try to bring you great value and entertainment and inspiration and meet great people. So make sure that when you're interacting in the chat, change from the default setting that is only speaking to hosts and panelists to change it to everyone right above where you chat. That way, everybody sees what you're saying. So far, I see everybody's doing that really well. I'm impressed. And second, if you want the question asked live on the show to GC, to Rory about what's happening in Jacksonville and these big decisions coming down the pike, I ask that you pop open the Q and A box and put it in there. And the reason why is because I have limited talent. The Q and A box stays still. The chat moves really quick. I'll go cross-eyed trying to keep track and I really want to make you happy. So help me help you and we'll get the questions asked. That's it, man. Long, long intro there without, without further ado. Rory, you joined us one of the first four episodes. You had unbelievable networking speaking points that I still look back at and learn from of how you got here, how you got connected in the community. I'm super, super impressed by that. But right now, we're talking about these big decisions coming down the pike for the city of Jacksonville. And you have a take on how to structure that public and private collaboration? How the public sector should approach incentivizing growth from the city? You want to tell us a little bit about how you think about that?
Yeah, I mean, I look at it in the exact same way that I'm sure every one of your investors and everyone in the community looks at it. So what is my return of investment and how long does it take? But the difference for us is that we analyze that not just in dollars and cents, but what else it does for the community. So dollars and cents, a hundred percent, you have to look at this. Are we getting a return on our investment? Will we get the money back? That's one piece. The other is, is to improve overall real estate values in an area such that everybody's tax bill will go up and it starts to pay for what we've already done. So that's the second piece. The third piece is, is it going to make our city more attractive for people to move to themselves? Or to retire to, or to bring new businesses or help us grow current businesses in? And then the last piece of the puzzle, for me anyways, is, does it add to our sense of the community? Such that we are moving the city forward where everybody has a great place to live, work and play, as we all say nowadays. So there's lots of pieces of those puzzle and you look at it through that prism and you can typically get to a really good deal for everybody involved. One of the things that people don't know, but I want them to know for sure, every time I say this, I'm a fiscal conservative. So when you see a hundred million dollar deal go through, I promise you, there's not like a hundred million dollar check that we're handing over to some developer. It's almost always what's called a rev grant. So it's a return of the taxes that you created by doing the investment. So for example, you've got an empty piece of land. It costs us money to have it on the tax roll and for us to be mowing it every day and to take care of it to keep it clear of crime and all the rest. But you take that zero tax value piece of land and you have somebody build a $300 million hotel on it. All of a sudden, the tax value just skyrockets. And we let the developer keep about 75% of that. And that's when you see these big numbers, it's about keeping the tax value that the developer themselves created. So get that straight.
Right. It's, and I can speak from experience because we have some incentives coming from the city on some of our projects. And it's not just as simple as getting a check to be able to do those projects. The rev grant is something that's really important for people to know. But it's also important to know that almost without exception, any, any grants or any monies that are given from the city come post completion after a laundry list of things are done. So the developer, JWB and our projects, still is responsible for the financing and the cash to actually get the project to fruition. So the city does a very good job of making sure that there's those milestones in play. And Rory, you brought up something that I, I've really never had a clear picture on. And I'm sure others would really gain a lot of insight as well. You mentioned that there is a, a return on investment calculation. I'm sure that's probably where the conversation starts. I know that we needed to show our return on our investment by the incentives that the city was able to give to JWB. Could you give people a sense of what maybe, is there a standard that you're, that you're looking for to consider a project? And then does it maybe go a little bit below or above depending on the impact to the community and the overall, you know, livability of Jacksonville?
Yeah. So there's, there's two pieces of this puzzle, generally speaking. If you're, especially if you're talking about downtown Jacksonville, which is regulated by the DIA, the Downtown Investment Authority. There's two pieces. One, they're just going to do a market analysis. They're going to say, here's what it would cost to do this deal without any government money. And here's where the market is today. And they look at to see what the gap is. And sometimes the gap is so wide, they say this deal is just not doable by any measure. So that's the first piece. And the second piece is what is going to be the return? And if they do do the deal, and the goal is to get a one for one number. And typically in about 20 years, get to one for one. So if there's a $50 million value, they'd like to get a return of $50 million worth of tax benefit alone. Don't look at the other four pieces of the puzzle, just the return on the, on the tax benefit within about 20 years. One to one is ideal. Sometimes they go a little low, sometimes a little higher. Well, as we get better at this, I assume they're going to go much higher.
Yeah. And would that one to one come from after you give the rev grant to that developer? So call it maybe 25% of the actual revenue over those 20 years should equal one to one? And I understand that correctly?
Yeah. And, and that's exactly right. So the last 25% should pay for the rest of the deal.
Seems like a huge win for the city to be able to do that over 20 years. I'd, I'd take that investment.
Well, anybody who like is a fiscal conservative and that worries about the dollars and cents of these, there is value to this. You have to have a longer view. You can't just look at this year's cycle. But if we don't do this, it's going to cost us more over time. And so there really is a benefit, especially when all the surrounding properties start to go up in value. And if we do it correctly, like other cities have Nashville being the best example, Austin, there's tax values are skyrocketing all around the city and new deals are coming in without any government incentive. And so it's, it should build on itself with momentum, even in a bad market, it should build on itself.
I love the Nashville example. Because if, if I'm thinking about where to put my dollars as an investor and, and I'm investing for a full market cycle, if I can make an investment today that pays for itself, right? Has positive cash flow from rental properties is where I'm going with this. But I can peg that investment to a market that is like Nashville 10 years ago. Well, I've set myself up for a tremendous opportunity for growth well beyond just what historical normal home price appreciation levels are, right? Like levels of home price appreciation around Nashville and the surrounding neighborhoods have skyrocketed because of the success of Nashville. And I think a lot of us think about Jacksonville as, you know, Nashville 10 years ago or 15 years ago, right? And you bring up a really great point as far as how this incentive, you know, equation is different for Nashville today than it was 15 years ago. Could you tell people a little bit more about why we kind of peg ourselves to Nashville and maybe what some of the similarities are for them?
Yeah. I mean, the, the headline is Nashville's at the bottom of the eighth inning on the value that people are going to get over time. And Jacksonville's at the top of the third. So that we have much more room to grow. Basically, those options are gone now in Nashville to have really dramatic investment growth. But our cities were about the same size 10 years ago and the downtowns looked about the same. And the NFL teams were performing about the same quality of football 10 years ago. And look, these are southern cities that have bigger neighbors, i.e. Atlanta, Miami, Orlando, that just haven't had the love. And of course, Nashville kind of got their political leadership organized, their incentive packages together. And then they had a natural industry, the music industry that they built off of, and then it popped. And now their downtown values, they're literally building a Four Seasons downtown Nashville right now for no government incentive, because that's how well they've done. And Jacksonville just hasn't got there yet, but that's why, you know, I'm a councilman and why the rest of us are in this game is to align the leadership, get the incentives together, get us excited about what Jacksonville will look like in 10 and 15 years. And the football team should be playing better because it couldn't play worse.
Are you going to, are you going to go personally responsible for that one too?
You know what? I will guarantee that our record over the next 20 games will be better than the last 20 because we haven't won one yet. So there's a pretty good chance we'll win one.
Yeah, bold news, bold news from Rory, Rory Diamond.
Rory is a bold guy. Um, you know, I know that we're, we're going to discuss a couple of things, but one of, one of the things we're going to discuss on the show is this upcoming vote that is about to happen today in city council that happens to have a Four Seasons Hotel on the docket. Rory, you want to tell us about that?
Yeah, that's tonight. This is, uh, so if you don't know Jacksonville, we have a big river that goes through. It's called the St. John's and empties out at the top of Florida, starts in Orlando. And along that river was a historical riverfront, which had a whole bunch of docks and a working riverfront, which has not happened again, you know, for like 40 years. And it was environmental disaster, got cleaned up for the most part and has just sat there empty in this like prime section of our city. And multiple developers have come along and had plans for it and they've all fallen through for various different reasons. But finally tonight is literally the, the last piece of the puzzle of city council will vote to make the shipyards piece work. And here's what's going in, which is just super excited to everybody who cares about this piece of land. You're going to have a Four Seasons, which our NFL owner, Shad Khan is paying for 100%. So he's putting $300 million into building a hotel. In front of that hotel will be a new marina space, which is, you know, activating the waterfront and actually having places to go with your boat, which tons of people around here have boats, not a lot of places to go. So this should be a signature place for that. There will of course be a Four Seasons Spa and, and the Four Seasons residences there too. In addition to that, there'll be a marine resupply. So you can go and get gas for your boat and food and all those things. Right next door, they're building a office tower. In that office tower, you're going to have the Jags front office. You're going to have a bunch of other lawyers and really high-end A space, which hasn't been built in Jacksonville in 20 years. There's nothing else like it. There's a few other projects going up right now, which would qualify, but they, they, they haven't been finished yet. And then in addition to that, there'll be a, a facility that is going to be run by Baptist Health, which is a large healthcare chain here that's focusing on knee and, and elbows and joint surgeries. And so it should be some healthcare tourism there in a really high-end facility. So that's the, that's the main development. It should be one piece of many pieces around the stadium when it's all said and done. But I mean, look, it's a Four Seasons on the river. It's going to be spectacular. And by the way, if it doesn't happen, they don't build a Four Seasons, we get all of our money back. So we've, we have clawbacks for everything if it doesn't work out. But I have a lot of faith that our multi-billionaire NFL owner who really loves Four Seasons and owns the one in Toronto is, is the guy to, to make sure this happens.
I mean, and I can't overstate like how big of a deal this is for Jacksonville, for the community of Jacksonville, the residents of Jacksonville and for all of you as investors in Jacksonville real estate, right? The shipyards has been one of these things that people in Jacksonville talk about as, wow, I can't wait till we actually do something with this. But there have been a number of roadblocks, either people or politics or the real estate market that have prevented us from doing this. But I mean, this is like a, I believe it's 40 acres on the riverfront in a major city that is, is just kind of like a blank canvas. And to be able to have the investment of the Jaguars, um, you know, to be able to do that is incredibly important. But like this is placemaking at its best for downtown Jacksonville.
And, and it anchors the whole area from one end where the stadium is all the way to downtown Jacksonville. It should be, well, I, it's kind of like putting the keystone in first, right? And then all the rest of the pieces will come.
Yeah. And that's, that was my point, right? In order to have a similar experience as a Nashville, right? You've got to have a couple of these flagship projects, right? So I think of the shipyards being that project there for a number of reasons, right? The placemaking component, also the investment from the Jags, right? We want the Jags to be here for forever, right? To know that the, the owner of the Jags is putting $300 million doing this and expanding his network of Four Seasons potentially to come to Jacksonville to be known as a Four Seasons city is incredible for, for downtown Jacksonville. We don't have a five-star hotel in Jacksonville. So, and then, but I think you need a couple of these, right? So I think about this, I think about on the other end, the landing and what we're doing in Brooklyn, right? Like spanning that, that riverfront is incredibly important. And I think you need the big ones. And I'd love to hear your opinion on this Rory, you know me, I'm just shooting from the hip here. But you know, I think you need those, those big projects as well as the small ones, right? You need to make sure that the smaller wins that are happening inside, right? JWB is doing a few of these. There's a number of other developments that are happening. You need them both. You can't have kind of the overall goal of what you want with one, but not the other. So to have this happen now, to have this historic vote happen today, and I think it's looking pretty good as far as getting passed, is a big day for Jacksonville. I wanted everybody to be aware of it.
Yeah. And it'll pass 19-0, it'll be unanimous. And, uh, and look, this thing is gonna, it's, it's going to get built. And I think you're right Greg, that the, the infill efforts of all the other developers in JWB is so critical to the puzzle. First of all, it makes sense to do from a financial point of view, but you have to have something between two things. And that's the critical piece there. So whether it's event space or new apartments or condos or whatever we're doing. Yeah, all those coming along too. The other thing I love about Jacksonville right now is everybody says the size of our downtown is this problem because it's hard to get the density. I say, no, 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 no. All these other downtowns are so hemmed in. They have so little space to expand. Once they get five signature projects and there's nowhere to go. Asheville, North Carolina, great example. It's done. There's nothing else you can do. You have to go over highways now and all the rest. Jacksonville has plenty of space to keep going up and up and up.
Bring up a good point there. I was doing a little bit of research on Nashville. As you can tell, I, I love that comparison with Jacksonville. And just some, some stats that I was looking at, um, you know, in Jacksonville, we have 7,000 residents living downtown and our dense, and our, and our, um, are the amount of space that we have downtown is 3.9 square miles. Nashville has about 15,000 people living downtown today, was much different 10 years ago. But now they have 15,000 people living downtown in 1.8 square miles. So the goal here, and we've, we've talked with Daniel Davis and others here on the show recently, talking about the city's goal to get to 10,000 residents. Well, you can see why we have that goal as a city. It's because we are trying to emulate and model the, the experience that Nashville has had. And we're getting close, right? We, it wasn't too long ago that we had 3,500 people living downtown. And it was that way for a long time.
Yeah. And I've got good news for you. I'm the Chair of Land Use and Zoning. So all development in the city kind of goes through my committee. And we have approved over 13,000 units, right? So that's coming. And already under construction or underway with financing is 4,400 units downtown alone. That includes the South Bank and the North Bank. So we're going to shoot past 10,000 over the next two and a half years, no problem. That should easily happen. And that's just units. There's typically, unless you're a dork like me who lives with just my dog, there's usually more than one person living in a unit. So we should easily clear this.
Wow. I mean, that's really critical.
Yeah. Before, before the show, we were just talking about how this shipyards vote is, has been like multiple generations in the making and how it hasn't passed. And now we're on the cusp of, you know, downtown hitting the shipping point, this shipping point, this tipping point. Four Seasons Hotels showing up, right? This like critical density that, that seems to be happening all around us that, that is, makes us a very apt comparison to Nashville's previous trajectory with some upside as well in there. That all sounds phenomenal as somebody that owns rental property in Jacksonville and knowing that this is going to affect the macro economy. How is, what's the difference? It sounds like things are getting easier in city council and in incentivizing these economic developments. And I, I just want to know, how, how do you make it, how do you make it easier for this type of stuff to happen? Because it seems like y'all are doing a really good job.
Well, I think most investors want predictability and most developers want predictability, which is so they can build in a timeline and they can build in a timeline with their financing and any other piece of the puzzle that they need to go from idea to this thing is finished. And so a couple of things we've done, I think, well, which is now formalized and made very transparent our incentive packages and how we do things, whether it's our downtown investment authority or any other entity that works with us. So that's one good thing. Two, we're also making it faster to get through. So it's not fast enough yet for me. I'm about to propose legislation that will give the city 60 days to either thumbs up or thumbs down something. And if it's, uh, if they can't move it fast enough, it'll be permitted by right. So it'll just go. So we, the pressure will be on the city to move. Do things like that and you align it and you can make predictable how long things take and be faster than other cities and be more efficient and be very welcoming to outside investors, something that we haven't talked about yet. But Related Properties is one of the best developers in the entire world and they do signature towers. They, they've transformed Miami, they transformed Fort Lauderdale. And now they are building a beautiful tower on our South Bank. And when they come in, they tend to do one property and then they do another, and then they do another, and they do another. And when I was working with them, they said, listen, this was welcoming for outside investors. Jacksonville was a place where we wanted to do business. We're going to keep doing business. And I was like, then we've done our job. I was like, this is great.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with Related Group and George Perez and all that being, being a Miami guy, right? Like he basically, yeah, yeah. Listen, man, if you, it's funny, I always use the analogy of, if you watch the first Bad Boys movie and you see the Miami skyline, that was like 93. Then you watch Bad Boys 2, which is like 2000, you see the Miami skyline, totally different. And now you see the Miami skyline, it looks like Manhattan. And that is largely driven by, by George Perez, right? So, you know, we got a, we got some pretty relevant questions here in the Q and A from Andrew Barnhill, who avid fan of the show, member of the community. He cares very much about these urban centers. He's seen, you know, being in Atlanta, he's seen how like urban centers make properties go. So he's got a couple of questions. And I think the most relevant one is that he says, it sounds like the political situation in Jacksonville is amenable to the downtown development now, which has not always been the case. Are you worried at all about political elements getting in the way in the future? Is there any way to, as you say, we're making this more predictable? Is there any way to bake predictability into it politically?
Uh, I love, I love the question. So you're actually looking at the probably biggest critic of downtown investment on the city council. I represent the beaches neighborhood where Greg lives and where a lot of JWB people live. And frankly, my district doesn't care about downtown. However, the economic case is what's driving the political case, which is it just makes sense for us as a community. Whether or not it's how much we spend on crime reduction or how much we need to keep the Jaguars here and make us a forever NFL city, or to bring new large, um, you know, national and international headquarters to our cities to expand our success and bringing fintech to Jacksonville. These are all pieces of the puzzle that everybody agrees to. And when there's alignment like that of, of need, you get a conservative like me and you get the far-left liberal on council all saying the same thing, which is we win no matter what if we do this. And that's why I think there's a lot of alignment. It also helps to have the richest owner in the NFL willing to put his money down too. That's a huge piece of the puzzle. You just can't underestimate it.
And Rory, I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on this too. I would imagine the hardest part of getting that alignment probably has been maybe the last couple of years, I would think, or the last three years or five years, or whatever that timeline is. Because it's getting started is the hardest part, because you're putting dollars out there, you're changing legislation, you're, you're doing that and you have, you don't have anything to show for it yet. Now we actually have things to show for it, um, which I would imagine would, would sort of pave the way for that kind of economic understanding to, to be more relevant, um, even if the political situation does change.
Yeah. I mean, you have to credit the current Jacksonville mayor, Lenny Curry, who really said, I want to do downtown. I want to see it happen. I want us to be like Tampa and Nashville and all these other places. And, uh, you know, he, I don't think he'll ever get enough credit for this, but he really did kind of focus everybody, say, okay, let's go ahead and do this. And it's politically painful. I mean, I've had to vote against some of the stuff that he wanted to do in order to get there. But he did the lift and now that's why downtown is, is kind of on this trajectory that we're on right now. Yeah. And then I, I assume the next mayor will do the same thing. In fact, all the people running for mayor are talking about the importance of downtown. So I'd be shocked if all of a sudden we're just like, nah, we're not going to do this anymore. We're going to, we're going to worry about something else.
Yeah, this is, this is fascinating. All right. So we're talking Related Group, we're talking Four Seasons Hotel. Drew's got another question. He talks about how there seems to be very little high-rise ownership in, in residential downtown Jacksonville compared to other metro areas. And do you expect more growth area in the future? And also is asking about how then do we make it more pedestrian friendly? Do you have any kind of like insight into the future of that stuff?
Yeah, I like the question. So pedestrian friendly is a good one. It's, it's now intent part of our planning downtown. So for example, where we used to have the Jacksonville Landing is going to be both a beautiful park, whether or not it has a big Lerp or Jack statue in the middle is still to be debated. But, uh, so starting from that, you know, kind of centerpiece all the way down to where the Four Seasons will be, is going to be walkable, bikeable. We finally have scooters and, you know, rental bikes all over downtown. I mean, it's, it's been a little bit of a painful process, but I think everybody gets the fact that they like to walk around downtown. And it's now a much safer place to be. There's just no question about it. It's well-lit. JSO, our Jacksonville Sheriff's Office takes it very seriously. And so it's inevitable that people are going to start to want to live downtown, in particular retirees. I know that seems like a crazy thing. Everybody wants like the fancy young people that come in and they think that's going to be the greatest thing. I disagree. I actually think Florida's, uh, economic and tax climate makes it really, really likely that retirees will find downtown Jacksonville as interesting as anybody else. The climate's great, that we were the most welcoming city for retirees. And I think it'll be fun to see that happen. It may not be as sexy as everything else, but hey, somebody's got to eat at restaurants at five o'clock too, right? It can't just be the 10, 10pm cloud.
Yeah, that's true, man. And, and it's another, another macro trend for Jacksonville to capitalize on, right? Like right now, we're capitalizing on that short-term COVID macro trend that got super accelerated, these long-term macro trends. And then we know that there's this macro trend of retirees and the aging boomers and all these populations that are coming down. And we have this like amenable climate and all these different resources, this active, you know, attachment to open spaces within the city fabric. That's good for aging. Those are good plans for people. So I think it makes perfect sense to also attract retirees and young professionals alike into the downtown core.
Yeah. And, and, uh, critical to that piece of the puzzle, not just the tax climate here in Florida and Jacksonville, but also the fact that we have three massive healthcare chains all right here. And probably most importantly, the Mayo Clinic. So when you talk about like highest end healthcare, there's literally only three cities in America that have a Mayo Clinic. And we have their second largest right here. And trust me, that matters. So I go there, it's spectacular.
Yeah, we have a lot of people that fly in just to be able to take advantage of the care that they can have here that can't get anywhere else in the country. Right? We don't, we don't talk enough about our, our healthcare system. And I just wanted to add to the point that for Andrew's question about the lack of high-rise residential, that's absolutely fair too. You know, I think what you'll see over time is again, what's happened in Nashville is you have big developers coming in now and building more high-rises now, um, simply because the numbers work. But right now with the state of downtown, right? We do have to give big incentive packages to developers to be able to get things going, to get projects renovated or for the shipyards, right? We do need to create an incentive package for, for the Jags. And I think when you're doing that, I'm sorry, not for the Jags, for Shad Khan's investment group. When you're doing that, I would imagine Rory, again, feel free to tell me what I'm missing here, but you, you're looking for the low hanging fruit at that point, right? The one that you can get that return of capital back to the city. And the ones that are really going to be that placemaking or kind of set the stage for future development. You do that well, you get rents up in the city to a point where developers can come in. You do that well, you get rents up in the city to a point where developers can come in for themselves and develop without the need of incentives. And then it starts to create this flywheel and ultimately developers come in, rents continue to rise. And then those developers build those high-rises without the need of coming to city council to get that approved.
Yeah, no, you have it exactly right. Although I think the notion of a high-rise is a little bit on itself, like overrated. For a really nice dense core, you don't have to have 50-story buildings. I mean, they, they kind of look cool from a distance. I get it. But um, I, I don't, I've never put a super high priority on having like, you know, mega tall buildings. Because there's huge downsides to them too. So, but to keep sunlight and parks and all these healthy things happening all at the same time, I'm fine with a 30-story building. It's totally fine by me. So you know, Jacksonville tops off right now around 40 stories is our tallest building. And if, you know, our scale is fine, there's no reason to go crazy. Although the views are amazing. If you get up high enough, like you see all around.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great call. Both the views thing, right? Like Florida being a flat area, you don't, you don't get appreciation of how beautiful the nature is around us unless you have like a drone or you're flying in or you're open to high-rise. But to your point, right? Like a 12-story building, you know, that, that five to 12-story building provides great urban, urbanization. Europe is built on that. Great walkable cities, great livability, stuff like that.
DC, you know. And there's actually a huge benefit too, because you know, if you look at Chicago with like tallest buildings, you know, second tallest buildings in the country, and then it just like crashes. And you don't have the nice development up to it. Whereas Washington DC is built out perfectly with 10 and 12-story buildings and keeps going further and further. Their boom has been fascinating to watch because you can't rebuild taller anywhere in that city. So uh, that's why I've just never, I, I think hype is a little overrated. I think uh, quality and, and durability and sustainability is more interesting.
You mentioned sustainability. And before we go on to the next topic, Chris Consaga has a, has a question about what are the, what are the, you know, we're talking a lot about growth and, and he is, he's asking about the environmental impacts with the Four Seasons. And maybe you can just kind of address the sustainability and the environmental impacts of all this growth happening downtown and, and how you consider that into the equation of the ROI.
Yeah. So we just hired a resiliency officer, chief resiliency officer in the city. Um, she's super awesome. She went to University of Michigan. So she's clearly brilliant and super smart. I guess I did also. You know, uh, we, candidly, we never really did a resiliency plan. And um, so now with the Four Seasons and the, you know, associated developments down there, they had to come forward with how is this resilient for sea level rise or any other issues? Um, in particular, in that area, you're talking about remediation of old problems, not worry about new ones. But in, in this case, they're building up about 22 feet higher than the river. And uh, very unlikely that sea level rise is going to be an issue for that. They also have um, a drainage system built out literally by the best engineers in Florida ETM to figure out how to move water around. So it's been very thoughtful, although this is an area that look, there's no environment to preserve. It was like quasi-destroyed, you know, over the last hundred years. And so now this is just about sealing, improving and making sure those problems don't get worse.
Yeah, Shipyards area is almost like um,
The Brownfield.
Yeah, Brownfield. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's rehabilitating a, a place that's previously contaminated because of all the activities. So anything happening there that remediates and, and, and removes that stuff is actually a environmental win, especially in a sensitive area like that. So that's awesome, man. We talked a lot about Shad Khan and Dad Ownership Group. There is, you know, there is conversation around what they're trying to do with their practice facility and future stadium renovations. You want to talk to us about your outlook on what's happening there?
Yeah. So in addition to the Four Seasons, which lines one side of the stadium, on the other side, like just kind of going around the clock, you're going from three o'clock to six o'clock. Uh, they've, we've built a, we're about to build a brand new practice facility, which itself is kind of brilliantly sustainable. It's got all sorts of solar and water collection and all the rest. But the purpose of this is to give the players and the, and the coaches a place to actually go and do their work. Right now this, this stadium is incredibly antiquated, filled with rats and water and all this other stuff. And so uh, a big piece of the puzzle was to give the team somewhere to go and do that work and to do it better than anywhere else. So I think it's good. Obviously they haven't been using it because it's not built and we're losing football games left and right. But uh, at the end of the day, these two developments are going to make it possible for us to do a renovation of the entire stadium. Which will be done piece by piece. We can actually keep our stadium. So we don't have to build a whole new one. And so uh, here, George would like to make a, an entrance, sorry. He's, he's a little under the weather. So he's a little needy right now. But uh, yeah, so we'll be able to move the team and all the coaches to one facility. We'll be able to move all the front office to another facility. And then the Jaguars will be able to, along with the city, renovate, keep these stadiums.
Yeah, I was checking the timeline on it. So if I'm understanding correctly, you know, we've already approved the incentive package for uh, for this, this renovation. It's already signed, sealed and delivered. It's about, I believe it's a 50/50 split.
Right.
Between, between.
With the practice field and facility, yes.
Yeah. Um, and then the city owns it going forward. So that's great. The, the Jags I, I read are responsible for any overages. So there's, there's some culpability there too. Um, and the goal here is to do this at the end of the 2021 season to start the build, I believe. And then do that throughout the 2022 season. So then it'd be open for the 2023 season for the practice facility. And that's, it seems to me that's a part of a bigger win here, which is we believe that the Jags and Shad Khan and his development team is an incredibly positive force for overall Jacksonville. We want to make sure we keep the Jags long-term. Could you talk about how important that is? Or maybe why this practice facility was done to be able and how that will help the Jags be here long-term?
Yeah. So it's a combination of things. Uh, the city of Jacksonville owns the stadium. And um, in order to keep the Jaguars here, we need to get them to extend the lease. The lease is up in about eight years or nine years. Um, and so what we have to do is essentially let them do all these investments around the stadium uh, with us at the Four Seasons, which the Jaguars owner owns in a separate vehicle. The uh, practice facility, which we'll co-own. And then finally the renovation of the stadium itself. Once the Jaguars make that kind of investment and extend the lease, then we're an NFL city for all time. I actually think that's going to happen. Like I, I'm a hundred percent confident that Jaguars are not going to leave now because we've done these things. And then the last piece of the puzzle will be um, a development like you'll see in downtown St. Louis or near the park in Baltimore, which is what we call Lot J, but taking one of our large parking lots and do a huge live center and another hotel and some uh, commercial. So literally as you finish out the clock, you've got all the pieces of the puzzle going on around the stadium and then the stadium itself will get renovated, extend the lease, and then we're good to go. And that'll be a fantastic anchor for one side of town. I mean, it does get better than that. For people who don't know, in addition to that, there's a Vet, ByStar Veterans Memorial Arena, which is a larger, uh, you know, concert space. There's also the Jacksonville Jumbo Shrimp are right there and their entire baseball complex is there. And uh, you've just got the sports entertainment like rock and roll district. And it's super easily accessible by two different highways and two different sets of bridges and then downtown to one end. It should be at the end of the day, one of the best sports and entertainment areas in the world.
Rory, this is where I kind of warned you about, right? Like I'm a, as a, as a former Miami resident, I get very like queasy when it comes to incentivizing billionaire sports owners to build a stadium that they get to profit on and how the city trickles down. But you've kind of stated that you think of things as an ROI um, calculation and all the votes. And you're one of the most fiscally conservative people on, on the, on, in the city council, right? Like how do you, how do you see the, you know, it's creating this overall sports entertainment district? I would say akin to maybe even Arlington in, in Dallas that I just got back from where they have like Ranger Stadium and Dallas Stadium and Jerry's World and whatever. How do you justify, where, where does the city recoup the investment that's being put into these facilities and whatnot?
So two things, um, in the past, cities were kind of held hostages for brand new stadiums. And if they didn't do it, then the team left. Here, we've got a team that's not trying to leave. They're not, they're, I've gotten, I look, I'd be the guy they would lobby. I'd be the guy that would threaten and they're not. They're saying, hey, how do we do all this together? So the Jaguars are successful. And uh, the owners' investments are successful and all Jacksonville's successful. That's one thing. There isn't this like gun to my head. The second piece of the puzzle is the return on investment is through rev grants. So by investing in land that is otherwise valueless or parking lot that's doing very little, now you've got a huge entertainment district, which is generating taxable value. Somebody has to pay those taxes. So we let them keep a piece of it. We take a piece and you get back to the money that we invested. And then finally we get to collect hotel taxes and we get to collect entertainment taxes. And then people come here and they pump their gas and they, we collect local option gas taxes and that money comes into the city. And uh, you put all those pieces together and these things easily pay for themselves. That part's easy. The last thing is there's actually, I'm a, you know, I'm a former federal prosecutor, I'm a lawyer. The contracts themselves are critical. And so I actually read them. Uh, I know that seems crazy. But if the developers don't do what they're supposed to, they don't get the incentives or we can claw back whatever incentives we've already given them. And to me, getting the clawbacks was really important. And so we have that now. So we gave some land to Shad Khan so he could build the Four Seasons. If he doesn't build it, we get the land back, that kind of thing.
All right, you passed the test. That's actually really interesting, man. And, and you know, it, it definitely has some, some differences from what happened in Miami that you just addressed. No gun to your head, um, investing already in an urban center, right? Like the Dolphin Stadium is not anywhere close to downtown. Marlins Stadium was never put there. The Heat have been a wild success, which is the one that's downtown. So makes, makes a ton of sense. And, and the hospitality and tourism tax is definitely an attractive thing and activating parking lots that are just heat islands all, all to themselves is a, is a great thing. Let's talk about, let's talk about the downtown historic renovations and what's happening there. Bring, bring me up to speed on this. I think they removed the $1 million cap on renovations. Can you tell me kind of how you think about that stuff?
Yeah. So the downtown Jacksonville is the oldest urban core in all of Florida. As, and it's not even close. It's much older than anywhere else. Everybody thinks of Miami and Orlando and Tampa, but we're very old. And so a lot of these buildings are over a hundred years old. Some of them are 125. We had a famous fire. So those things are around a hundred years old. So you know, it used to be that there was a limit of a million dollars to provide an incentive package for preserving a historic building. Now that cap's removed. In addition to that, our downtown development um, entities have come up with much better categories and strategies for how they're going to help with historic redevelopment. Candidly, I don't vote for all of them because sometimes I think where the market is and what it costs to uh, keep a, a building is too high and I'd be fine if we tore them down. But you know, I've supported the majority of them. JWB has had some really cool ones with a uh, the renovation of the former Federal Reserve Building, which is one of the most beautiful buildings I've ever seen. And I don't think anybody in Jacksonville even knows it's there.
I know, man. I love that building.
It's really spectacular. So you want to keep the gems like that. And now we have a system for doing it.
You know, it's critical. I mean, I can tell you that when we put the plans together to acquire and then start to develop, you know, our buildings. Um, largely around Hogan Street there with the old Federal Reserve Building and 218 Church, which is the Florida Baptist Convention Building, which is right next door. And then we have another building just at the end of that, that street right there, that block right there, which is a porterhouse mansion. You know, quite simply, we could not do, no developer would do those projects if there was a $1 million cap on the incentive package to do it, right? Our renovation budget for 218 Church or the Florida Baptist Convention Building and the old Federal Reserve Building is in the tens of millions of dollars. And we've been pretty open that we're doing that, uh, that extensive work and taking that risk. And we are not going to get a decent return on our investment, right? Like.
A while anyway.
Yeah, for a while, right? We are in for the, I should say, we hope eventually, right? As Jacksonville continues to grow. Uh, but right now there are so many better uses of our capital than to dump tens of millions and to take that risk into a renovation. Because the market rents just don't support it. So we feel like we are big champions for downtown and we love that we're doing this project. But there's a lot of other developers who, who don't have this long-term outlook and are not willing to be patient with this and take on that risk. You know, but quite simply, if, if that downtown incentive package had not been uh, revised, there would be no activity going on downtown at old Federal Reserve Building, or at least not by us. So you're seeing some real tangible wins. And there have been a number of other projects, probably a small handful now that have uh, been approved. Um, and I, you know, I was talking to Alex, you know, before our call too. And he's like, you know, there's a lot more in the pipe, in the pipeline. Which I'm sure some will make financial sense and we'll continue to see that, that infill development uh, for downtown continue to go because of the legislation that you've been able to put forward, Rory.
Yeah. Well, one thing I do like is that uh, because it's a longer term view right now of historic renovations anyways, that people are doing them like JWB and the Cowford Chop House and a couple of others are like super awesome. It's, we literally have the most beautiful steakhouse in the world now. And it was a historic building, which basically was ready to fall over. The investor, he's awesome. He came, Jock, he came in and he literally, every piece of that he owned, every piece of it, he, he wanted to have his stamp on. And now you have these love projects, which are just beautiful. Um, so I'm, I, I, I kind of like to see if, if you're going to do it, do, do it really, really well.
I agree. You want to know? I just had uh, my, my mom and my mother and father-in-law came into town two weeks ago and I took them on this tour. Now they are not from Jacksonville and they haven't been to downtown Jacksonville probably ever, because I do live out by the beaches. But I said, let me take you on a tour of downtown. And I started at Cowford Chop House and we had this amazing meal. And then we went and we took a tour of the old Federal Reserve Building and the um, you know, Florida Baptist Building and Porterhouse Mansion. And really up in, in Noco, in the north core there where JWB is really active.
Not buying this name, not buying it, not.
You're not buying the name? No, you're not a Noco fan?
Listen, listen, you have Pablo here. He's a marketing specialist. We got to do better than Noco. I'm, I'm just kidding. I don't care what we call it. Just keep dumping your money there. I'm in.
As long as it's known for something, I don't care what the name is. We just, I want to bring, I want to build something that people can relate to and, and actually go down and, and get excited to go there.
Yeah. I, I mean, uh, Alex gives these great scooter tours uh, downtown and everybody who's anybody in Jacksonville now, like billionaires, big time CEOs. All these people are, are doing it. And if you, if you go on that and you don't come away like super excited and totally fired up, there's something wrong with you. It's like, it's pretty awesome. It's like playing SimCity.
It's really fun. I was actually seeing in the chat that, you know, we have a meetup happening in early December. And I was seeing that there was some, some chatter about doing one of those tours. If you guys are coming to the meetup in early December here in Jacksonville and you want to make that tour happen, let me know. Um, I can do my best to try to do that. Um, Alex actually has uh, he just hasn't done a tour lately because it literally was all the rage. They did a newspaper article about it. He was getting loaded up left and right.
I was one of the first. Saying, early adopter.
But it's a lot of fun. So if, if it's important to you guys and, and uh, we can, we can try to make something happen. So let me know.
There you go. There you go. Great, uh, great request by Ken Maline. I think, I think we can make it happen. Even if not with Alex, GC, you and I, you and I have done it now, right? Like we can, we can figure it out. Maybe Rory can join us and uh, and his doctor.
We'll do shots somewhere along the way.
That's the Rory Diamond special. Rory, you know, all of this paints this like unbelievable picture of the future of Jacksonville, right? Like Chris Consaga saying, future of Jax looking bright. It looks amazing. Uh, as a, as an investor in real estate, hearing all these comps to Nashville, it really gets my juices flowing. But this isn't even your full-time job, right? Like you're the, you're the, you're the CEO of, you said at the beginning of this call, of a, of a nonprofit that pairs rescue dogs with veterans to help them with PTSD and help them reintegrate into society. And that's expanding nationally. Is that, does, does Canines for Warriors work with the city or is, are these completely separate things that you're doing?
So two ly, totally separate things. Uh, Canines for Warriors, we're the nation's largest provider of service dogs for disabled veterans. As you say, we, we rescue dogs and then train them to be awesome service dogs. Clearly my dog down here is not well-trained. Uh, but the, the ones we give to the Warriors are amazing. Uh, but we, we neither accept nor request money from the city of Jacksonville. I never will. Because I'm a city councilman, it's a conflict and I stay clear of that. Uh, so that's all super separate. But yeah, I love getting to run Canines for Warriors. We built a massive campus down in St. John's County, which is just one county south of where Jacksonville is. We're building the world's largest rescue dog training center just up the street here. We're uh, have a beautiful campus in Gainesville, cut the ribbon on a new campus in uh, San Antonio a couple of weeks ago and Phoenix is coming up and it's a, it's a good time. Uh, but what's awesome is that we get to do something that really matters, uh, which is uh, rescuing dogs and then helping veterans suffering from post-traumatic stress. I can't ask for anything better to do in my day. And of course, JWB has been an awesome supporter of us over here. Uh, well, before I was in city council, uh, JWB uh, you know, was with us literally every step of the way of that growth and supporting us, which I think is awesome.
Yeah. Do you remember talking, what, probably four years ago, five years ago, we're like, Rory, I think we're going to put on a golf tournament. And we want to raise some money for you. What do you think? And we're all like, yeah, sure, let's do it. And uh, it's crazy to think where that conversation started to where we are today. Now we are hundreds of thousands of dollars later, uh, donated, uh, either in the form of financial donations to Canines for Warriors from uh, JWB Cares and our network here. Or actual homes that we get to donate to uh, to veterans. And Rory, could you share just maybe a couple of the success stories that um, you've been able to be a part of through specifically through the, the home donation program?
Yeah, it's been pretty awesome. I think we're on the fourth house or the third house. I can't remember. It's, it's a bunch. So yeah, number four. And uh, it's, so you think about a veteran who goes and does multiple deployments and then they come home. And they have got debilitating post-traumatic stress or traumatic brain injuries. And they, they literally can't work. They're having difficulty even getting out the front door. They're almost always living with parents or a caregiver. And something really happens to your self-esteem when you're that dependent on other people and you don't have any independence. So Canines for Warriors does our part and we, you know, get a great service dog, a great wraparound services and get a warrior up and ready to go. But then JWB came along and gave them a, literally a home, a house, three bedrooms, two baths, brand new house, built, brand new. and handed them the keys with no other expectation. This, it's amazing. You see hope like reborn right in front of the Warriors. And every time we do this, Greg and Pablo, I know you guys have seen this. It's just like, I have to like look away or wear some sunglasses really fast. Because, I mean, it's not just that warrior. It's their family. It's their parents. It's their kids. Everybody is winning from this. And I think they really like the fact that the J W B employees go in there and do sweat equity. They're painting, they're building, they're doing lawns and stuff like that. I mean, it's, it's real. And so it's just love all around. Everybody winning. It's pretty cool.
Brother, it's amazing. And a, and a big shout out to our entire community. Um, Rory, we actually just passed a major milestone this year, which is going to directly go to, to the homes that we're going to build, uh, for Canines for Warriors. This year, we hope to build two homes, one for Canines for Warriors and one through our partnership with the Tim Tebow, team, excuse me, Tim Tebow Foundation. So we're excited not just to do one, but two. But in order to do that, we had to raise a ton of money. So what started out four or five years ago, uh, with the conversation with Rory, uh, saying, hey, let's put on a golf tournament, see what we can do now. Just to report to you all, just last week, we passed the $100,000 mark of donations and sponsorships for just this year in 2021. And that was our goal. And by accomplishing that goal and putting us on, on that trajectory, we know that we're going to be able to donate two homes coming, uh, next year. And so a big shout out to everybody who contributed. We had folks on, on our community who graciously opened their wallets and donated hundreds of dollars and thousands of dollars just simply from being here and a part of, uh, of the community. So a big thank you to you all and a big kind of shared celebration, um, in this, in this wonderful accomplishment for us all.
Yeah, no, that's awesome. And then, yeah, hey, if you're gonna associate with any, another nonprofit, Tim Tebow Foundation is not a bad one. They're pretty awesome. They do such great stuff, especially for kids with disabilities. They're amazing.
You know, we keep good people around us.
Yeah, definitely, man. Which is a shining example here in our community of the Not Travers Investor Show community. Rory, what is, if somebody wants to get involved with Canines for Warriors, wants to help out the cause, wants to hang out with you, where, where do they go? Where, where do they go to help out the cause with Canines for Warriors and get involved?
Yeah, we just relaunched our website. So caninesforwarriors.org. It's awesome. It's got everything you'll possibly need to learn about what we're up to. It's got a bunch of great stories and blog posts and it's updated every single day. So you can actually keep good track of us there. Facebook also, Canines for Warriors. And if you need a dog, we have dogs like George who just couldn't be service dogs. And we adopt them out to the family all the time. And so, uh, you just, uh, go on there. If you're looking for a really great dog, we can, uh, probably hook you up too.
Love it, man. I love it. I love it. What a great, I mean, this is just such a, a great picture of the leadership that we have in Jacksonville, right? Like the quality of insights and the collaborations that are happening, the future of the city, the, the wonderful causes that are happening. J W B being a part of kind of like all of it, being able to bring our, not, not your average investor show communities to it. You know, like, like we said, if you want to know about owning rental income properties, if you want to know about best-in-class property management, keep coming to the show. We're gonna keep giving you information. Today was particularly heavy on insights in the real estate market of Jacksonville and getting an edge, right? Like you've learned about a couple of things coming down the pike that may outperform the expectations of what you're reading about in the news or whatnot. If you want to know more about how to fit your exact situation into your portfolio, go to chatwithjwb.com. Would love for our friends that joined us today to be in the Facebook group with us, right? Like Gina and Joanna are sharing the Facebook group link. We've got over 3,000 investors just like us. We're doing meetups nowadays. It's a real thing. There's a NorCal meetup. We're doing a Jack, another Jacksonville meetup. We're talking about a Denver meetup in the chat that I'm really excited to go to as well. Greg, I hope that you're in. And, um, and, and we're just, you know, we're, we're growing this community of like-minded investors, people that want to give more than they receive, people that want to grow, all these things. It's, it's really, really awesome to be a part of it. Thursday, G C's not joining us, but we're still having the J W B Rental and Investor Property of the Week.
Week, week, week.
And we're actually gonna have Lydia Filson, the mother of the godmother of the Not Your Investor Show, the fairy godmother of the Not Your Investor Show family. She's gonna be talking about her experience as an investor. We're gonna be breaking down a property together. I've had a couple of interactions with Lydia. I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a lot of fun. She's got a whole litter of puppies that she's gonna like have on the show with us and we're gonna do a virtual puppy swarm. I think it's gonna be awesome. So join us on Thursday at 12:30. Rory, this has been a real pleasure for me to be here. For all of our friends that joined us, we never take it for granted. They take an hour out of the middle of your day to hang out with us. And we just really, really are focused on providing value to you. And the fact that you show up, the fact that you come back, that's what's telling us we're doing a good job. If we're not doing a good job, if there's anything you want to see, please reach out to us. We want to make these topics as valuable to you as possible. And we bake them into the show. We bring people that you want to meet onto the show. This has been great. G C, I'll give you last words, my man.
Well, first of all, Pablo, why are you trying to kick me off the Thursday show, bud? You know I'm gonna be there on Thursday with you and Lydia, right?
Well, I thought, I thought you told me, I thought you told me about this morning that you were gonna be there.
You tried to kick me out, man. You just tried to kick me out. Uh, no, I'm gonna be here. This is the first one that we get to, to have, uh, a client, a friend with us as we're doing kind of like the, the new spiced-up, uh, Property of the Week show. So we're gonna be able to have a, a platform for anybody here who's a current client of J W B. And you want to jump on to the Thursday Property of the Week and hang out with Pablo and I, um, and maybe share your story or share your insights on how to invest and, and whatnot. That platform is there. So Lydia is gonna be our guinea pig there, but I am definitely going to be there on Thursday.
Best day of my life, man. This just made my day. This is awesome.
Rory, thank you, bud. Thank you for being here. Every time we get to hang out, you know, I know that we're friends and, uh, we have a really wonderful relationship as far as our two organizations. But you being able to paint the picture from that, um, city council perspective was really refreshing for me and something that I know everybody really gained a lot of value from. So thank you so much for, uh, being the leader that you are and for spending a few minutes with us today. And we hope to have you back soon.
Hey, happy to do it. And George enjoyed it also. So thank you.
Thanks for hanging out with us, George. All right. See you all on Thursday.